It's at sound.
I'm getting hot, so I'm not gonna...
I have called to order at seven o'clock for some of the pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Linda, business citizens forum, does anyone have any sign up?
No.
Nope, okay, next up, public hearing, public hearing is scheduled on business zoning ordinance, provide an opportunity for just some comment, council may adopt those zoning ordinance without going reading. Alright, public hearing is open, does anyone wish to speak about zoning? Linda says no.
No one signed up.
Okay.
Motion approved with public hearing on zoning, or closed, sorry.
Close, motion to close the public hearing on zoning.
I second that motion.
Second, all is in favor? Alright, thank you. So, we are going to advertise now for the zoning, and we will have consideration of the zoning ordinance next month, to be the official statement. Alright, on regular agenda, first up, consideration of variance request for 665 Woodcrest. I told the homeowner, I told Brittany she didn't need to show up, Brittany requests. So this is from their builder, basically, we approved a variance for them on the side swing, and it was 26.9 is what they asked for, turns out it needs to be 26.6, there's three inch difference. So the builder submitted a variance request, so that seems simple. The other thing was, they did not have a drawing, so they wanted to encroach in the side yard with the driveway, and they're gonna stay three feet off the line, which is the current, our current zoning draft we're working on is that. So, everything they're doing is actually in the coming up zoning. So, I told them, don't bother showing up, this is, this is, should be fine. So I, we recommend as the city that this get approved. So, any other questions? Alright, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance?
No, no, this is the variance request.
For variance request, sorry.
Okay, for 66... Does she need to say what the variance is on, Linda?
I've got it in the minutes, I've requested, just to clarify, it's 26 feet, three inches that they're requesting.
Okay.
The variance was for 26 feet, six inches.
Six inches, so it's three inch difference. And ours, new zoning is 25 feet, so, okay, so I have a motion to approve variance, you have a second?
I second.
Three seconds, all is in favor? Okay, thank you.
Is that a good one?
Alright, number two, consideration of public services contract, we ask for representatives for the public services to be here, something came up, and they couldn't make it, obviously, they're not here, so we will move on. Table that, take a shot at it, do your next. Next up is consideration of outdoor lighting ordinance.
Comment, I mean, we're way down, we don't have to approve that yet, just for...
Correct, this is just a, our contract hasn't been a year, alright, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're only a month, it's not gonna hurt anything.
Right. Alright, so number three, consideration of outdoor lighting ordinance, and that is Mr. Reed.
Okay. I have been working with the National Organization, I think I shared this with you at our last meeting, and we were down to one issue which has been resolved, and it deals with the lumens per net acre in section eight, and if you might remember that initially it included shielded, partially shielded lighting, and it did not include shielded light. And so, the International Organization not only wants to limit unshielded, but they also want to put a cap on shielded as well, which makes a lot of sense. I was always operating on the impression that if it was shielded, you could have as much shielded light as one wanted, but that's not their policy. So, they have made a recommendation which seems reasonable to me, that I will incorporate into it, and into the ordinance, and what it basically says is that, first of all, the total outdoor light, total outdoor light output, excluding governmental owned streetlights, used for the elimination of public right of way and outdoor recreation facilities of any developed residential property shall not exceed 10,000 lumens, that was the limit that was originally there, of which no more than 2,000 lumens per net acre may consist of unshielded lighting as adopted in section four, item C, in the ordinance. So it kept the same matte total lumens threshold, but just dumbed out, if you will, I guess, the unshielded part of that.
Now, the, is the wording gonna be clear that that's per residential property?
Yes.
So it's not gonna be that they're quarter acre of one foot, it's not, it's not scaled?
No.
It's per dwelling?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the other, the other change, wording will be changed to the total output light output, again excluding governmental owned streetlights needed for the elimination of public right of ways and outdoor recreation facilities of any developed public or private non-residential property shall not exceed 25,000 lumens per net acre, and that threshold didn't change, of which no more than 5,000 lumens per net acre may consist of unshielded lighting, again referenced in section four, item C. So, so that's, that's the major change that meets the last issue regarding the National Organization's approval of the ordinance. There were some other discussions last month, and for the life of me, I cannot remember them, that I made, they were minor, as I recall.
Most of them were mine, of course, they're all minor.
Yeah, yeah, they were all yours. So I made, I made those changes, but I didn't, I didn't highlight or anything like that. So, so here's my, my suggestion, I will, there's no rush to approve this, and so with the changes that resulted from suggestions from last month, plus these two changes, I would like to recommend that everyone take one more review of it, and then we'll put it on next month's agenda.
For action.
For action. And I'm happy to answer any questions, anybody else has any thoughts.
So Ed, is this the new verbiage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But it says per acre?
I don't think, I don't think what's in the packet is new verbiage.
I don't think that's, that can't be, because we did the packet on Monday, I think Ed, you must have just got this like today.
I did.
Okay, so this is the old stuff?
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
Don't know if that incorporated in the one.
Okay.
Yeah, I did, I think I got this about five o'clock, I started.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's not gonna say per acre, it's gonna say per dwelling or per property?
No.
Not everybody has an acre.
Well...
Well, it's still, still per acre, right, so 25,000 lumens per acre.
Well, come on, it says, well, it says per net acre, I went toward net.
That's right.
Well, look, it's anything that's, let me share the definition of net acre. Total number of initial lumens produced by all lamps utilized in outdoor lighting on a developed property by the number of acres, the net acreage is a property, of a property is the gross acreage of that property, less any acreage that is considered undeveloped.
So if the lots, that could be a combination of lots, or a combination of houses, right?
So basically, it's the lot.
Yeah.
We're not gonna define undeveloped to be your front yard.
No.
That doesn't mean, my theory is that they're totally undeveloped, if you take your 40 acre.
I think, yeah, I think they're talking about larger pieces of property.
Property.
Yeah.
So for that, for us to determine?
Yes.
What, and then, okay, alright.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Alright, so we'll bring that back this month, you know, for action. Okay, thank you, Ed. Alright, next up, we have number four, consideration of capital improvements that's made. Okay, so I want to give everybody kind of an update on a couple things that are going on. When we made the budget for this year, on the utility side of the house, what we did was, we put 10,000 for CapEx, and we put 75,000 in the engineer line. Reason why we overloaded the engineer was, we didn't know whether we were gonna have to put in the well a lot. And that's coming up next, the discussion about the well. But, so we really didn't put any CapEx, virtually very little in the budget. We've done some CapEx, but that's because of reimbursements for some insurance clients, where, you know, we have to count the CapEx, because you had to buy the equipment with the insurance money. So, we've done some. Alright, so, basically, when we're gonna get into CapEx here, there's a couple, there's some that are road related, we have to do it to prep up for the roads, and there's others which have nothing to do with the roads, they're just our standard, you know, if we're not doing roads, this is something we would do organically. So one of them is, we have to fix the Cary lift station, we gotta reroute that lift station. The idea would be to do it before the spring rains hit, because no lift station can't take it, and it, there's too much infiltration, and the heavy rain is when we have our worst problems. So as you all remember, I talked about this before, basically, all of the loading happens on the Stowe lift station, firstly, all of the shores goes through that one lift station. And if they would have wired the shores correctly, or better, we would never have these problems, but there's too little power, they didn't do the power right. So it's a little bit like, we've got a four cylinder car, and we're trying to pull, you know, a motor home. It works great if you're mowing, pulling a trailer with your mower on, you can't pull a motor home. So these lift stations are undersized, there's no way to fix that. The only way to fix it is to run new power all the way there, and it would cost seven figures to run power to these lift stations, there's no way to fix it. So, if the motors can't be upsized, then you gotta reduce the load, it's one way or the other. And the way to reduce the loading on the lift station is to reroute it backwards, send it backup melody into the gravity feed lineup melody. I think this is a project we gotta do, we gotta do it no matter what. So I put in there the cost estimate for this project, it is, in there, the cost of the project would be about $35,000. So one of the issues that we have is, we're gonna have to go under eight driveways, there's eight driveways where we need to be, we'll bore under them, so we don't, we're not gonna be destroying any driveways, we'll just bore under them with the line. In a, in a perfect world, I'd love to own a boring machine, I'd love to have one for the city so we could bore on our own. Someday, some city council's gonna have to buy one, right now, spending 12 grand on owning one, I, I don't know that it's worth it for us right now, I, I don't know, it really depends on how you wanna do it, you know? But, but that's, that's ultimately the question, do we wanna buy a new boring machine and use, do the boring's ourselves?
I would say no.
Right now, we, so this is a, this is having a third party do it, and this is the cost estimate of what it would be. So my goal here is to let you know about this, in order to do this, my goal would be to bring to you next month, a budget amendment, to, to add this to the CapEx line, and then to get your authorization to move ahead. But we want to get this done by March, before the rains hit, okay? So this project is, is the one that is teed up right now, on the sewer. On the water side, the capital improvements right now, when we get closer to the roads, we're gonna have to do like we did on Lake Crest, we're going to have to put a new main on Meadow Lake. So it's gonna have to be a new main running down Meadow Lake. When we do that, we're gonna put a fire hydrant on Meadow Lake, because there isn't one. You can't put one on Meadow Lake, because the current main is only three inches, has to be a six inch main, the fire department wants it to be an eight inch main, we'll probably put eight inch again. But that's, that's gonna happen, but in order...
Eight or six?
We need a minimum of six. They'd like to have eight, I don't know what we'll do, because we gotta loop it.
I was gonna say, you're gonna connect an eight to one, a six.
Well, I don't know what that is on Woodcrest, right, we don't know what that steel line is, but at a minimum, we'll probably do six, we'll loop it back around down Woodcrest in a loop. Alright, so that's one issue. When we do that, we're gonna blow up every single driveway running down one side of the street. And we're gonna cut across the street, because the people on the other side of the street, their water line has to be reconnected. So we're gonna cut the street, we're gonna, we're gonna go crazy on the street down there when we do it. Because basically, the way that we're, we have to run a main next to the existing main, so they still have water. So we've run two parallel mains side by side, and then we run the tap off the new main right up next to the meter, and then the last thing you do is flip the meter, you put a new meter on and tie the two together. So, all that stuff has to be done, so we're gonna be digging around the lot, that's why we did it over here the month before the roads, because we just tell you, we're not putting your driveway back, because they're gonna rip it out anyway with the concrete roads. So that one's coming, there's no sense in getting too far, there's not, there's no way we can do that now. The more pressing item with that is, when we do that, we put new water meters in, because we need to take the old, we need to reconnect. We're going to remote read meters, we have to go to remote read at some point, because all the new development, every, all the new developers that come in, we want them to have remote read, we want them to drive by and read the meters, we don't wanna have somebody walking around doing all that. That's the future, that's the 70% of the town that isn't built yet, there across the street. So we gotta have a standard. Our problem is, if the developer came in and went, said, "Tell me what you want," we don't know what you want. So, part of this process is, we've gotta talk to Little Elm, we've gotta talk to Patterson, we've gotta talk to Lake Cities, we gotta find out, what is everybody using, what, what's works, what doesn't work, you know, what software do we need, you know, get pricing, we gotta learn off of everybody else, because we're gonna only do this one time. So part of the Meadow Lake experience is, it's gonna force us to figure out our remote read. So my understanding is, you know, it's whatever, there are ones where you walk up with a wand, and you tap the meter, and that's how you read it. There's ones where you drive by down the street with your cellphone, and you can read the meter. And there's ones where we can sit in the back office and monitor you in real time, like they do in a nuclear power plant, you know, and tell you that you're running a bath, and, you know, Serena just washed the kids, and, you know, you can see who's using too much water, and, I don't wanna go there, but there's so many permutations, it's really big, it's complicated. And we gotta get on it now, so we're ready for the, for the fall, when we get on to this job. So, so that's a big one. The other impetus for this, is that I did, I did an analysis, so our current meters, so our current water meters that we have in the shores, are one inch meters. According to manufacturer, the, the meter itself is warranted for 15 years. It's a brass meter, it's, it's not gonna break, but it's got a 15 year. There's a different warranty for the accuracy of the meter. It's gonna read the, because it's a spinning device that water flows through, and it, it's a meter. So the accuracy that they guarantee is five years, or 1 million hours, that's the guarantee for the accuracy, 1.1 million on a one inch meter.
So they guarantee the structure of the meter beyond that, but just, they don't guarantee the...
They don't guarantee, because he took it out after eight years and stuck it on a bench, and bench tested it, it would be within the AWWS standard of like 98% accuracy, they're not warranting that it's gonna meet the, the accuracy standards. Okay, so now, okay, so that's, that's the theoretical number. Well, where are we in the shores? Well, if you go down Stowe, 19 of the 25 meters are over a million, most of them, or more than half of them are over 3 million, we have one that's over 5 million. If you go down Cary, Cary's even worse, about 90% of the ones on Cary are over a million, more than half are over 3 million, and we have a 5 million, the biggest one in the whole city is on Cary, believe it or not. It's almost 6 million gallons run through the meter. Melody is, got the highest percentage, virtually every house on Melody except for the new one, is way over the 2 million mark. So, now, what does that mean? Does that mean we gotta replace it tomorrow? No, but it means that down the road, so overall, 60 out of the 77 houses on the shores are over the warranty period, they're out of the warranty period. So we know, then, we're gonna have to replace those coming up. Again, what are we gonna replace them with? Well, it makes no sense to replace them with, you know, a $300 meter where the remote read is $400. You know, so there's a big meter replacement on our horizon for the shores, it's due. Again, leading to the notion, we've got to pin down what we want for these remote reads. And then I envision, Clint and I talked about it, in this part of town, kind of as something new happens, or as a meter, you know, gets worn out, or we replace, or something breaks, or whatever, we'll slowly transition the ones over here into that, you know, into the remote reads. And then we'll reach a point where like the fire hydrants, we'll just say, okay, let's just do this street, this year, call it a day, and then, you know, next period, you know, we can afford 20,000, let's do that one. But the future for us is, we gotta be smarter, Rob, we can't, we can't have a guy walking around with a notepad, writing down, you know, 25 sheets of paper, like we have now, that's not our future. And plus, it'll hold down, you know, some of our, you know, you know, every time there's a meter, we read the meters, there's always rereads.
Yes.
There's always, you know, you gotta, somebody goes through, and the guys do a great job, but look, if you had to walk around here and read 250 meters, you're gonna transpose a digit, you know, you're gonna drop a zero, it happens. So we have this iterative round of going back and rereading, and, so the ultimate goal is, we wanna be a high-tech, quiet town, but, but have technology on our side. So, that day is coming, and it's gonna happen with the roads. So that meter project is the next big thing that we gotta nail down, so that's next on the horizon, that's big, okay? I don't know that any of that CapEx for meters, or if we even tried, that's gonna be next year, next fiscal year when we do the main on Meadow Lake. That's gonna be next fiscal year, that'll happen like in December or later, so, I'm just giving you a long-term heads up, we gotta pin that down now, okay? Alright, next up, any questions on, on that? Alright, next up, then we have the MDD financials. Okay, so one of the things that I wanted to, I, I wanted to give everybody kind of an update, because when we do the audit, we don't really talk too much about the MDD, the audit is focused, obviously, on there, we go. So, let me kind of give everybody an idea, just, just to make sure everybody's on the same page with the MDD. So, you know, the way that the city is set up, basically, is, we all, you know, have the governmental side, which is us, and that's got all of our different bank accounts and everything, and the general running of the city. Then we have the business type stuff, which is our water and sewer. And, you know, from the audit, these, the accounting for these are very different, they're totally different, you do the accounting totally different. This business type is literally, you're trying to run it like a business, you're trying to look at P and L, and you should generate positive cash flow, because you need to have money for replacing assets and buying pumps and valves and stuff. So, this is a business, just like any business, you need to have profit in mind, you need to generate, you need to collect your account receivables, you gotta be, you know, a reasonable business kind of thing. Well, on the city side, there's no such thing, there's no P and L, we don't, we don't try to make a profit, you know, we can't say you need a building inspection, let's charge you 99 when it costs 50, we, we don't run sales, we don't, so the accounting for these are totally different, they're fundamentally different entities. Now, the way the MDD works is, it's very much a parallel setup. We call it the MDD because that's its overall name, but basically, it is split into two parts, just like the city, there's what we call the MDD general fund, and what money do they get? They get taxes, they get sales tax, just like we get tax in our general fund. Then they have their utility side, which is just like us, that's the water company. So their accounting is, they run this like a business, they have a P and L here, and then they have their own governmental fund, which has tax money. What makes the MDD different, what makes it rather unique, is that the MDD gets to decide on a project, and they get to decide on what they think is a project that they can do in the district. That project could be whatever they decide, it could be putting in equipment in Rocky Point. Part of the MP is allowed to do infrastructure, the MDD could say, "We're going to put in a new ground storage tank for the city," because the city is in the district. The MDD could say, "Part of what the project's allowed to do is put in roads, water, and sewer lines." They could say, "We're going to put in the water line running down Meadow Lake." That's all possibilities, because the MDD can do anything in the district that relates to infrastructure, okay? So that's the MDD, and the MDD board, you know, there's five people on board, Linda's here, she's on the board, Daryl was on the board, Linda's on the board. So the idea is just, that's what the MDD does, they're, they're a nice organization that has a lot of flexibility. Until now, they didn't have any money, because they were rebuilding the water system, really didn't generate a lot of money. Well, now if you see, Clint, can you scroll down, I'll just go through these real quick. Okay, so this is a little hard to see, but basically, this is the MDD, so the MDD took in, so just to give you an idea, the numbers, so the MDD took in 23,000 in taxes, so the MDD, that government, took in $24,000 last year, in sales tax. Now of that 24,000 they took in, what they ended up doing was, can you scroll down, Clint? They ended up spending 15,000 of that on making improvements to the water system. So there's now a new chlorine, there's a gas chlorine system over there, there's new steel manifolds, basically, Rocky Point right now mimics Lakewood Village, they have the same technology we have here, they have there, so it's interchangeable. Our chlorine gas cylinders, we now use at Rocky Point, rather than before, they had five gallon jugs of chlorine bleach that they would dump into a garbage can, that was the original chlorination system. So the MDD, the tax side, takes in about 24,000 a year. Alright, scroll down, Clint? Well, this is just basically showing you the MDD's balance sheet, the nice thing here is, the MDD assets, that water system, its assets are about $120,000, okay? That water system, $120,000 for the MDD. Anybody know who we paid to buy it? $8,000 is what we paid to buy it from the state of Texas. So that's how much has been plowed back in and reinvested in that system, to bring it up to compliance, and to put in steel instead of, you know, the, the one inch PVC, the new ground storage tank, the new, I mean, bringing that thing up and making it a modern system, that's how much the MDD has plowed back into that thing. I mean, it's really, people don't realize how much effort has gone into making that system state of the art, which is what it is now. So, anyway, so that's, that's, that's the MDD with the water system, one more. So, what this is, this is real quick, this is looking at the MDD itself, so they took in about $23,000 in water revenue. So they're taking in almost $50,000, about 24,000 from the taxes, another 23 here, so basically, the MDD's almost got about $50,000, they should top 50,000 this year in revenues coming in. It cost them, according to this, 14,000, so they made an $8,400 profit, okay? Which is what they're now reinvesting. But the more important thing is, so that's their op, so it's making money. It's making money, it's reinvesting that money, that's how that thing has got $118,000 worth of value in that water system, they're plowing that money back in, just like any corporation would do, right? You take your profits, you plow them back in to make your organization better and more efficient. So if you scroll down one more, Clint? Alright, last one. This is the one that really is important, the MDD, because some of that stuff deals with depreciation and accruals, the MDD... The MDD, that water system throws off $11,000 a year in cash flow. After all the expenses, after everything's paid, it throws off 11,000 in cash. So that means they've got 11,000 in cash right now, each year coming in, plus 24,000 in tax money. So they've got $35,000 cash flow coming in, waiting for a project, okay? They're going to take in another $35,000 this year in cash. The system's already expanded, it's up to, there's no more money to spend on the system. It's already rocking and rolling, it's all built out, it's ready to go. So the last thing then is, so they're going to take in about $35,000 this year just in cash. So then if you look, where are they now? Sorry, there's some blade throughout the scan, that's why it's got that. This is where they're at, as of December 31st, they've, they've got more than this now. They're sitting on $33,000. Maybe they're close to probably about 35 today as we speak, but... So at the end of the year, they're sitting on 33,000 in cash. They should generate another 35,000 this year. So the MDD is, is churning some money. They've got some money, they've got the money, so this MDD here, so this is money that can be used for any projects. So the way that works is, if there's a project that the MDD does, the MDD would say, "We're going to do a project, whatever, put in a fire hydrant, it's $5,000, let's say." Under the law, they didn't make 5,000 out of here and put it in the projects fund. Then we write checks out of the project fund. That's the two-step process that has to be done. But basically, this 11,000 is money that the Rocky Point is, is saving. That's for pumps, just like we have a utility fund. Pumps and valves, and if they need to put in another well, or drop the well, or any kind of stuff like that, that's their reserve fund, okay? Now, so that's the cash position. So one of the things that I think we need, okay, so everybody, anybody have any questions about the MDD? I mean, financially, it's doing well, and it's only getting better. And there's no more money to invest in the water system, it, it's state-of-the-art now.
And this is with them helping with the playground last year?
Yes.
And?
And the party.
And the parties.
Yes. So, you know, as things go on, you know, we may end up at some point tapping them, you know, so... The reason why, I want everybody to understand how much money is here, and where does, how much money they're going to have. So that, if, if there's something you think they might be able to help us out with, that's what we want to do. You probably never thought about it, you probably didn't think they had any money. Well, by the end of this year, they'll probably have $60,000 sitting in a bank account. And there may be things that, you know, we can work with them on. It doesn't do any good, you know, to sit the money there. Now, the other thing is, where I'm going with...